Ms. Carrasella?
Here.
Ms. Corr?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Hayward?
Here.
Ms. McThebola?
Here.
Dr. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Rendell?
Here. Mr. Hayward, will you lead us in the flag salute?
My pleasure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of meeting. In accordance with P L. nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one, notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record in the Ridgewood News on January third, twenty twenty-three. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the borough clerk and was posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office in the administration building on the same date. Copies of the procedures in effect for regular board meetings are available for the public at tonight's meeting. Ms. Scarpelli, will you read the mission statement?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The Glen Rock School District, founded on principles of education in partnership with the support of community, provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens.
Thank you. Ms. Wyatt, you're up.
Hi, everyone. I have a few things to say today, not as exciting as, I guess, last month's, but starting off, the middle school had their show, they did Grease, and I think that's like one of the first times they completely sold out all the tickets, so that was so impressive. I didn't get a chance to go, but I heard amazing things about it, and everyone was so proud of the performers. The juniors just finished their NJGPA testing last week, which is a graduation requirement. Good for them, I remember doing that. As for spring sports, the seasons are well underway, I think most sports have gone through a couple scrimmages and are moving on to games soon, and the middle school's spring sports season starts after spring break. The choir trip is this week, and they're going to Anaheim, so that's really exciting, the choir and band trip, actually. Last year we were in Orlando, this year we're in Anaheim, so quite the, you know, globetrotters we are. Guidance is doing a lot of scheduling meetings for the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors for next year's classes, and on the fourteenth, April fourteenth, we have our Day of Silence, which is led by the Alliance Club. Moving on to high school theater, the Playwriting Club has their performances, April twentieth to twenty-second, which is where anyone can, I guess, sign up to bring in a play they wrote or some scenes they wrote, and then they get to cast their own actors from the high school in it. So that's really exciting, to see all that student initiative. And then our just our normal, regular spring play production is April twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth, and it is the Play That Goes Wrong, which is actually on Broadway right now. And our last thing is that AP tests are the first two weeks of May, so most AP classes have gone into gear trying to study for those.
Thank you. You're welcome. Wasn't there something posted about one of your accomplishments recently? I don't think you disclosed that to us in this meeting.
Oh, yeah, our debate season wrapped up this past week, last week.
And so what would you win? Come on, tell us.
I won, or me and my partner Olivia Pagliisi, we won second-place team, and I won third-place speaker.
That's great, congratulations, Kate.
Thank you.
So modest.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Kate, and congratulations.
All right, so tonight, Mr. Van Ness and I are going to present the spring twenty twenty-two NJSLA score comparison. So we presented this back in the fall, November eleventh, no, November seventh, sorry. Sort of fall, late, early November. The scores, right, as required, but then it was asked to do a score comparison. At the time, we compared just to the state overall. So Greg will go through how we came up with a comparison, which is what districts did years ago, and some districts still do it today. We actually have a presentation of individual schools, like how Glen Rock did against this school and that school and so on, but that's not appropriate to do that to other school districts, so we grouped them, as Greg will share momentarily, so that no other school districts are identified, but they're similar, similar schools to us. So I'm gonna turn over to you, Mr. Van Ness.
Thanks. All right, so just a quick reminder of what was tested in the spring. So it was language arts grades three through nine. If you remember when I presented before, grades three, six, and nine were our kind of lower area scoring, and we're still looking at that, and I talked about that then. In math, you can see it's grades three through eight, but we didn't really have any eighth graders take it last spring, because all of our eighth graders took Algebra I. We had three scores from students who were out of district placement. So when we get into Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, you can see the note there, this was only ninth grade. So for us, what that means is almost all of our ninth graders were in Geometry, right? So all of our Algebra I is eighth graders. It makes it really hard to compare school to school, because not everybody does it the same way. In fact, like Ridgewood does a completely different sequence, they do Algebra I, Algebra II, then Geometry. So it's a little bit hard to compare apples to apples sometimes. The other thing I'll caution you about with Algebra II is that we had twelve kids take this. So last time, when I was talking about Start Strong, I warned you about small sample sizes, right? One kid has a good day or a bad day. With twelve, that's a quick, a quick change, so just want to caution you on those things when we get there. And then with science, it was grades five, eight, and eleven, so that's what we tested. So as Dr. Charleston was saying, we tried to compare against some like schools to give some fair comparisons, but we didn't really want to do head-to-head public comparisons, that would be a little bit, a little bit tacky perhaps. So what we did is, this presentation, we're comparing, all of the charts you'll see in a minute, we are red, so I labeled it here, we are red, Glen Rock, and we compared to all of Bergen County schools, and then all of the district factor group districts, which are I and J. So let me, let me kind of remind you what that might mean if you don't know. So many years ago, the state used to use district factor grouping to be able to compare schools that are similar in socioeconomic status. And so originally, I think it was nineteen ninety, they updated the list in two thousand, they stopped using it in two thousand and four was the last update. So it's, it's old, right? It's about twenty years old, but I don't think Glen Rock has changed fundamentally in twenty years either. And most, most, you might have somebody move from one band to another, if you will. So you can see, I put there at the bottom that Glen Rock originally was an I district in nineteen ninety, and then it was moved to J, which is the highest socioeconomic status. You can see the list there of the things that they used to do that. So when we're comparing our scores to I districts and J districts, we're comparing against districts that are similar to us socioeconomically. If there's one thing that we know about test scores is that they track very, very closely with socioeconomic status overall. So just to give you an idea of how many schools this is, in Bergen County, so we're comparing against K to eight schools, K to twelve schools, and also regional schools, so the numbers are all different based on what age range. So in elementary and middle, we're comparing against sixty-seven schools in the county, and forty-three that include nine through twelve, so that's either a K to twelve like we are, or a regional district. In New Jersey, overall, there were ninety-four I districts for elementary and middle, twenty-three J districts for elementary and middle, forty-four I for high school, and eleven J for high school. So it's, these are small groupings at this point. Here's the first slide, this is, the text is, I think, illegible, but mostly legible, but I'll go through it. Like I said, we're in red. This is language arts grades three, four, and five, and you can see grade three, I told you, is one of our lower-scoring areas. We're still well above the county, we're still above the I districts, we're a little bit below the J districts. But then when you look at ELA four, we're just a smidgen below all of the J districts, and then we're above them by fourth grade. So it's a strong showing here. I like to see that we're moving up from grade to grade, like we're moving these kids along, and that's always a nice thing to see. For middle school language arts, similar thing, I want to caution you again, sixth grade was that tricky year that we had, and so it's a little bit on the low side, above Bergen County, just a little bit below the I districts, and a little bit below the J districts. But by seventh and eighth grade, we're right there above or equal to. I think we're just slightly above the J districts in eighth grade, it's eighty-five-point-something instead of eighty-four-point-something. For, this is ninth-grade English, you can see we're right above the county average, and a little below I, and a little bit more below J. So again, those are, as I said, we're looking at three, six, and nine, what are the key things there that we're comparing to the rest of these districts, right? They all faced COVID, the same thing that we did, but we're also looking at transition years from when do kids move to middle school, that's not consistent between districts, and that transition to high school also. So we're looking at those things, supporting it with those transition years with teams, with what are we doing with our ninth graders, we're looking at that, and then especially making sure that our curricula line up with the standards, and making sure that that's happening in a responsible way. For math, this is elementary math, you can see we're red, we are above all of the bands in all of the categories, three, four, and five. Really solid showing in third grade, still solid in fourth and fifth as well. Now is where the comparisons get a little bit murky, because we get into eighth grade and Algebra and all that. So math six and math seven are the two on the left in the middle, still fairly solid in math six, seventh-grade math, really solid, and then we get into Algebra I. And again, I want to remind you, all of our eighth graders took Algebra I, whereas, oops, sorry, did I? There we go, sorry, forgot. Advanced one, not the other. All of our eighth graders took Algebra I, many school districts, only the highest-achieving math students take Algebra I in the eighth grade, right? And so that shifts a number of things, we don't have any math eight to report. I anticipate this year, in the spring, this number will probably be better, because we will be able to report out math eight, where those students are with the standards they need for math eight, and then also the Algebra I standards. So I anticipate this spring, this number for Algebra I looking better. For geometry and Algebra II, it's a similar thing here, so in ninth grade, which is, this only includes ninth graders, most of our kids took Geometry. In other districts, in ninth grade, only their very best kids in math took Geometry. So we're comparing not equals at this point. In Algebra II, we're doing fairly strong, those are our twelve highest-achieving kids that advanced one grade ahead, probably in fifth or sixth grade, to continue that advancement, to take Geometry, I'm sorry, Algebra II in the ninth grade. So this is, we're right there comparable, this is where I said it's a sample size of twelve, one kid sneezes and we might have a mistake on here, so it's comparable, it's very, very close, and we're happy about that. When we get into science, this is elementary science, so fifth-grade science, and we're above all of the other comparable groups there, which is something that we're real happy with, all the work that we've done with the new Inspire Science Program, we're in our third or fourth year with that now, I'd have to look at the date on that, but shows that the science teachers are really getting comfortable with that, the kids are doing a great job with it. In middle school, you know, when I report on Start Strong or anything else, middle school scores just drop in science, it's a problem, you can see it across all of it, right? We're at thirty-something, thirty-four percent, and the J districts are at forty-four, so we're a little behind that, but all of them dropping. So we're still looking at that, we still use the Inspire, we're still trying to align that to the standards, get it much more hands-on, get the students much more involved, but we're still definitely looking at that. But you can see, it's across the board, everybody dips in that eighth-grade science there. And the last one here is eleventh-grade science, and you can see it's a very similar story, we're just right below the J districts on average, well above the I districts, well above the county. So as we said, this was a way for us to compare against districts that are similar to us, right? When we compared to the state, we were well above every one of them, but this gives us a little bit of a closer target, to be able to see how are we comparing against districts similar to us as far as socioeconomic. This link here is the state's page, where every district's data is listed. So what we did is, we went through all of those districts and compiled it to make these graphs for you. It took a while, I think they put that out this winter, I think it was December, so we were looking at it over January and February, we're trying to figure out, we compared to individual schools, we didn't like that, so then we went back and looked at all these districts here. So if there are specific schools you want to be able to see, how did we do head-to-head, you can click on this, it's giant Excel spreadsheets, and you have to kind of sort through it to understand what's going on, but if you have questions, we'd be happy to help you through that if you want, but we're not gonna go through each of those in detail tonight.
Yeah, no, so thank you, Mr. Van Ness, for, I know that was a lot of work that your staff put together, but I do think it shows that our students are doing, are doing well. And while there's areas for improvement that we had noted back in the fall, I think it's just a job, as we say here, a job well done by our staff, our veteran and new staff, by our administrative team, all the work that we've done on curriculum, I think certainly the trajectory of Glen Rock schools is, based on these scores alone, is doing quite well. So kudos to everyone, we'll continue to work hard, continue to work on our curriculum in the areas that we noted tonight, but as superintendent, I'm very pleased with these scores, and I hope the board and community are as well.
Does anybody have anything for Mr. Van Ness? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you for the information. I just have a question, and it's more related to the state level, if the eighth-grade scores across the state are low, has the state done any sort of best practices or any kind of guidance to the districts in how to improve those scores?
Not that I'm aware of. You're referring to science specifically? Yeah, not that I'm aware of, and it's something I've been looking at for years, of why, why do these scores drop so much in eighth grade? And I'm not sure if it's an issue of the alignment of the test with the standards or implementation of the standards, but I haven't, I'm not aware of anything from the state that's explaining that.
You would think that the state would look into it a little.
You would think, and the, the science NJSLS tests were developed after the language arts and the math ones, by several years, and I remember four or five years ago, maybe a little bit more, when they were going through, what is the cut score, where do we draw the line, all that stuff, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure where the discrepancy is, I'm just not.
Anyone else? Dr. Robinson?
Yes, thank you for this well-put-together presentation. I think that the way that you've illustrated it, and even bringing back some of that old language with the I and J schools, gives the district a lot of the questions that they seem to consistently ask. And I would also encourage, for future thought, that maybe we continue to also have this kind of presentation in the future, with future years, so that we can kind of track it in a way that's easier for the district, the community to understand, rather. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Mr. Hayward?
Thank you again for the presentation. I just want to say, I look forward to this spring, now that we've actually got math eight implemented for the first time in many, many, many years. I think it's gonna be a very positive change, and I look forward to seeing the results. I hope people recognize the importance of what's going on.
Anyone else? Ms. Scarpelli?
Yeah, I just want to say, as long as I've been on the board, the issue has always been in our math dropping. So we've always done great in elementary, and then middle school tends to drop in high school, so I, I'm excited to see what the scores will look like going forward, especially since we have really focused on math and changing that pathway for kids, that we're not putting them all in Algebra in eighth grade. I know there have been teachers in the past that have been really vocal and active about us doing that, so I'm glad that we've implemented that, and I'm interested to see those scores.
Yeah, thank you for that. The, the thing about the math also, if you remember last month, we talked about new textbooks for Geometry and Algebra II, it's all part of this, how do we get this continuum moving all the way through to high school, instead of, as you said, that kind of drop-off that we often see, many districts see in middle and high school.
Anyone else? Well, I also want to say thank you, it is very nice to see some concrete data that backs up some of those changes that we have made over the last few years, sort of what Mr. Hayward was alluding to, like the structure of our middle school and high school, and clearly it's working, and I am very excited to see that data, and I'm very excited to hear that our kids are being prepared, and that they are thriving and achieving. So thank you very much, Mr. Van Ness. I believe that brings us down to your report, but you don't have anything, so I have a question, though. Would you, or maybe actually, Mr. Van Ness, rather, would you be able to give us an update on our district equity plan?
Sure, yeah, so in light of events that have happened last week and such, looking at the equity plan and looking at the actions that we're taking to, to make sure that our schools are safe and inviting and welcoming and supportive, so let me, let me just kind of go through, again, what I talked about in February at the Cal meeting on the thirteenth, we reviewed district goals, and in that was a review of our district equity action plan that we put together last year. So some of the things that we've, we've done so far, in September, we, we had professional development for all staff during those initial staff PD days on DEI topics, a variety of them, and staff had choices, that they could go to different ones based on what they needed. In October, we had a presentation for parents on DEI topics. We've continued to participate this year with the Kane University Holocaust Program, a number of faculty members, and I think even some community members are part of that as well. In January, we had a Holocaust survivor speak here at the middle school, high school on Holocaust Remembrance Day. We're following that up with, the JSU is going on a field trip to the Holocaust Museum in Rockland County, and it's a follow-up on that speaker, so it's not just a one undone, we heard somebody speak, and now we all move on with our lives, they're, they're taking that and moving it into small group and small conversation, and continuing that conversation. In March, on the March thirteenth PD Day, the GRVA actually brought in a professor to talk about inherent bias, about instruction, and making sure that we're addressing that in our instruction with students. We also had Rabbi David Levy from the Nonpartisan American Jewish Committee speaker for PD Day for staff, same kind of thing, talking about a lot of these issues with antisemitism and bias in our society. Some of the ongoing things that we're continuing to work on are continuing to plan anti-bias training and/or programming for professional learning, if not this spring, certainly next fall, we will continue it. We have ongoing middle school and high school programming to address bias, allies, character education, things of that nature, I'll get into that a little bit more detail down below. And on April fourteenth, I mentioned JSU is going to the Holocaust Museum, but there's also, the JSU is making a PSA for the school, for the school body, on antisemitism and on bias and such. And then the last thing I want to talk about, kind of not necessarily related to the Equity Action Plan, is about something that I attended on April fourteenth. So we were invited to attend the Glen Rock Jewish Center's presentation from the Anti-Defamation League called Antisemitism in Our Community: What We Can Do to Help. I'd estimate there were maybe fifty or seventy-five people in that accounting groups, which was, it was a nice turnout. I guess it was their first in-person meeting since COVID, right? They've had a lot of online speakers and such, but they were all very happy to actually be in the room again. There were two speakers there, I'm sorry, there were, like I said, about fifty, seventy-five, somewhere in there, people. There were members of the community, not just members of the Jewish Center, there was, I think, a representative from the town council, I was there, I know, I'm not sure if anybody else from the, I know no board members were there, but I know that there were other community members. So there are two speakers there, Brandy Katz Rubin and David White, and one of the things that David White was talking about in the presentation kind of resonated with me, as a good framework for thinking about bias and thinking about bias incidents, and that is something that the Anti-Defamation League has created, it's called the Pyramid of Hate. I put it in backup for the board, but if you want to, if anybody in the public wants to see it, you can just Google ADL Pyramid of Hate. And so the, and I'm just gonna read from it, actually, it describes it well. "The pyramid shows base biased behaviors growing in complexity from bottom to top. Although the behaviors at each level negatively impact individuals and groups, as one moves up the pyramid, the behaviors have more life-threatening consequences. Like a pyramid, the upper levels are supported by the lower levels. If people or institutions treat behaviors on the lower levels as being acceptable or normal, it results in the behaviors at the next level becoming more accepted." So the basis of this pyramid is this idea of biased attitudes, right? So I'm gonna just kind of talk through this for a few minutes. When we talk about biased attitudes, we all have biases, right? And some are based on simple preferences or limited experiences, some are based on prejudices, right, that we may hold, or we may have inherited, or we haven't really thought about it. Prejudices can be thought of as preconceived opinion or feeling toward a person before any facts are known, generally they're negative, right? It's natural for people to have biases, we all have them, right? But what part of education is, is helping people examine those biases, and how it affects their lives, and how it affects the people around them, right? Because if we don't think about that, if we're not thinking about the biases that we have, what happens is it can basically move to that next level. So instead of just a biased attitude, we start acting in biased ways, and have biased actions. So some things like, when we're talking about biases and these biased thoughts, they're typically small, they're typically kind of thoughtless, they're not intentionally mean, right? So they can be, sometimes they think that people are being clever, or funny, or playful, but it can be offensive, right, to other people. And so when we're talking about, as a school, what kinds of things those might be, it might be things like stereotyping, you know, based on physical characteristics, or race, or gender, or things like that. It might be insensitive remarks, it might be non-inclusive language, right, things like firemen or mailmen instead of firefighter, right? That we, when we have non-inclusive language, we're not necessarily meaning to be non-inclusive, we're just reinforcing some stereotypes sometimes. So the problem with this is that if we, if our biased attitudes go unchecked, they can become biased actions, right? And those are a little bit more intentional, right, and hurtful, you know? And so in school, we do quite a bit to try and address and help students think about their attitudes and their thinking and that. So some of the things that we've done, I'd mentioned the PD for staff, the professor who talked about inherent bias, and examining your own, and thinking about how you're treating students and your colleagues and all that. We've had presentations for students. In the elementary school, and next year in the middle school, we're using this ruler program, and that's not really about bias necessarily, but it's about recognizing and understanding and thinking about yourself, how you're feeling, and also how your actions are affecting other people. So it's a way of getting at, how are we interacting, how are we helping hurting bystanding, whatever it is, with other people? Character education is part of our curriculum. In the elementary school, time is set aside for character education by either the teachers or the counselors. In the middle school, counselors do a continuum of character education around a theme or a trait, making it age-appropriate for grades six, seven, and eight. We have at the high school a PLC of teachers looking at climate and culture, where they provide student panels, I was at, I've been at, I think there have been three this year, and I've been to two of them. The last one was about race, you know, how are, how are people feeling in this community based on race, and how are they being treated and such? So it's giving a voice to what students are thinking and feeling and experiencing here. And then we also have, as you know, an increased counseling presence, the Wellness Center, we, more helpers, more, more people to help people understand what they're feeling, what's going on, how can they get support, those kinds of things. So our job is partly preventative, to try and help students understand what their actions are doing and all that, to prevent it from becoming real biased actions. Because acts of bias happen when we leave our biases unexamined, and left uncontrolled, they, these biased actions can create a discriminatory atmosphere, right? So biased actions are much more intentional, right? Bullying, ridiculing, name-calling, slurs, biased or belittling jokes, kind of reminds me of the HIBs that we see every month, right? I mean, these are the actions that we see happening in our school community. And so we, at this point, this is our hard line, that we as a district have to say, we will not tolerate, we will not tolerate these kinds of behaviors here, we've worked to support you and prevent them from happening, but we won't do this, right? We won't allow this to happen in our community. And that, the tools by which we prevent that are code of conduct, building management, those kinds of things, the HIB process, even Title IX as a process. For things like hate speech, like a swastika, we call the police, it is a crime, right? And we report it. We report things like the antisemitism to the Anti-Defamation League, they have a reporting system, and they have a audit that they do, they just released it recent, last week, actually. So the reason that's a hard line for us is because we can't allow this place to become a place that accepts that, right? Because then we are creating a discriminatory environment, or allowing it to happen, a place where people don't feel safe, a people, a place where people can't get the education they deserve, or to work in a place that is safe for them to work, right? So we think about educational discrimination or workplace discrimination, but this is the future we're working with, right? So they're looking at all kinds of discrimination into the future, economic, political, education, employment, housing, criminal justice, like these, these things have long-lasting reach, right? So that's our line there. There are things that go beyond that line, kind of skipping a rung on this pyramid, if you will, when we see something like a swastika, because that is hate speech, it is not It is not protected free speech, it is hate speech. And that is a crime, right? And so that leaps right to that level of what they call on the ADL, bias-motivated violence, right? It's not violence against somebody, but it is vandalism, desecration, threat, terrorism. Those are the other things that are on that level. And so it's hard to say a child is creating violence when they draw something like this, but this is our hard line, right? This is, there's no room for this in our schools. And we will take all the steps we can to make that not happen here. So the role of it, we are a community, right? This is not a school problem, this is a societal problem. I told you, the ADL just released their audit of antisemitism, and acts of antisemitism are on the rise in the country, and especially in this area of New York and New Jersey. Schools can't solve the problem alone, right? We need to be working together as a community to solve these problems. We can't just treat the symptoms, punishing and, you know, those kinds of things. We have to do the beginning, the preventative work that I've been describing. But we also need the community to support us on this. We need parents to support us. We had a presentation about bias in the fall. Some parents came, and I think it was a good program, but we could use more of that. We need parents to model appropriate behavior, both online and in person, right? What are we doing? How are we representing ourselves? How are we speaking to people we disagree with? How are we voicing our concerns or problems? Children are watching us. Like, we need people to model that for us. We need people to address behaviors as they see them. If it's your own child, or if it's a friend of theirs, or if it's somebody in the community, we need that support too. We can't do it alone here. As far as the community, we continue to work with community partners, such as the Anti-Defamation League. I was on the phone with them last week, and with CRAN, and other groups here that are working towards this issue. And then the last thing is, as a community, how are we addressing this intolerance beyond the school walls? It's there, maybe it's harder to see. These kids aren't coming up with it out of nowhere, right? So I hope that answers your question. It was a little bit longer perhaps than you were expecting.
Yes, it was very, very thorough. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Van Ness, does anybody have questions here?
Thank you very much for that robust, impromptu presentation to us, just of the initiatives that have, we've been really working on and have integrated into our goals and initiatives. And just like you said, I can recognize that even the most robust DEI plan that we have is not going to, you know, stamp out racism and biased acts within our community, just because it's much more of an insidious problem than any district or even individual could take on. However, how can I go about asking maybe the board to make a statement that could just reaffirm our commitment to these DEI initiatives and making sure that this is just, that hate has no home here within our district? I feel comfortable as a community member by saying that within our community and our borough, it has no home here. And I don't want any of our community members to ever feel that we're unsure or, you know, wavering on this, so thank you.
Yeah, I think that's wonderful, Dr. Robinson. I can definitely write up a statement and send it to the board before it goes out. Yes, thank you. It's a great suggestion. Ms. Carr?
Oh, thank you so much, Mr. Van Ness. I thought, I think that was amazing. Being a new board member, it is very interesting to hear your initiatives and what you're doing. But what really struck me was, and then I had emailed Dr. Charleston about this unfortunate continued act, and my comment was, well, what do we do about the community? How do we get them? And I know that this district, in a very possible sense and form, has tried to engage the community, and we've tried to educate the parents, but what you said was, we can only do so much behind these four walls, but it really has to continue at home. You have to check your opinions, you have to check your attitude, you have to check your tone, and continue what you, the administration and the educators are teaching within the school is, if it's supported at home, there's a better chance of it being successful. I do want to comment that biases do go beyond just Judaism, you know? I know you didn't, I mean, I know without a doubt, I do want to say, you know, in public that it really does. I mean, we're still having bias incidences against others, against the other nationalities in the school. But, I mean, thank you for your last three minutes of what you were saying, because that really is it. I don't think children are inherently biased. It's obviously a learned behavior, and, you know, we could do the best we can to reverse it, but we need support. So thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, one more question, really quickly. When, you had mentioned that, you know, obviously, it's a police report, it's a crime, and it's reported. I don't, we don't need to know names, but do they ever tell you that there's a resolution to the case, to the situation? Like, that they solved it, they didn't solve it, they're still looking into it? Does the school get involved with it?
The ones that we've, that have committed the act, we found out who did it, meaning through our own investigation, through the police. So in terms of, once it gets in the police's hands, we're not informed of whether or not it's resolved, and they found someone. They really probably wouldn't be able to, because we're the ones that would have all that information, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. McThebola?
Yeah, I just want to say, it's a long-term solution, and this town, and a lot of towns, the bias that goes on. I did read the ADL report, and for 22, it went up 36% in the New York, New Jersey area. That's a huge amount. I saw today on the Today Show, they had Robert Kraft on, and he's, he's the, I don't know, he's some big shot at the football game area. But he started a program that refers to a little square that they put on the TV, and they said that the Jewish population is 2% of the people that you're going to look at in the United States, but they exhibit almost 55% of the antisemitic comments that go on. But his project, and again, it goes to sort of what Liz was saying, goes against, let's get all people aware of no biases. It doesn't, yes, it was important, antisemitic importance is very, is very important, but there's the Asian influence, there are others, and it should be no anti-anything in the United States. So it's important, as we write a comment, that yes, we know there's a lot of antisemitic importance, but we would like our students just to be kind and nice to everybody, you know? I think you go on Facebook, and you see all these things, let's be kind and nice. You see the older people, can we be kind and nice? Can we, you know, why can't the younger people see the same thing? So I think all the reports out, it's just going to keep going up and up, as far as I see it. And I know antisemitic statements have gone on in Glen Rock from the time my son was bar mitzvahed. There were swastikas on the Jewish Center that weekend. And there was no reason for it, obviously, you know, but they were there. So I want to thank everybody for trying to do something. And I think this, I'm going to get to the, the DSS DEI kind of program is really, really useful in the schools, and hopefully it can pan out to the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Stevenson?
You spoke about the PLCs. Was that done with the high school students?
Yeah, so the PLCs that I attended, they had student panels talking about, the first one's about kind of just overall stress in the building that I went to. The last one was more about racism. And the PLC is led by a couple of the teachers here, and I'm actually going to be meeting with them, hopefully later this week, to talk about what are the next steps? What do we, what can we do as far as, you know, working as a community with staff and with students and that kind of internal, the workings of the school, right? The students own so much of the culture here that it's sometimes hard for teachers to be on top of it, right? We don't hear everything that they're saying, we don't see their social media, we're not there. So how can we work in partnership with them and their parents in the community as well?
I believe in full disclosure, my son was a part of that panel. I mean, for those who don't know, my husband is Jamaican, so my children are not white. He's my youngest, that is at Glen Rock High School, and that is the first time anybody ever took the time to ask the children who are not white what their experiences are. So as a parent, I appreciate that, and certainly as a board member, I also appreciate that.
It was a powerful panel, I will tell you that. It was something, I came back to Dr. Charleston, I've talked with lots of people about it, it shook me a little bit, I'll be honest.
I got a few mumbles.
Yeah, yeah. It was, the students were very articulate and very, very clear about what's going on. And so that's why I want to follow up with the leaders of that. And as Dr. Robinson and Ms. Carr have said, you know, it's not just about antisemitism, it's about bias, it's about how are we treating each other, it's about a lot of different things. And so I, like I said, I'm working on scheduling a meeting with those teacher leaders right now, to see what we can do as far as getting something going with students as well.
Yeah, and honestly, just from my family's experience, because things have been said to my children, and a lot of times, it's out of ignorance. And I think it's just kids thinking that they're being funny, or, in my heart, I do not believe that it is meant to be hurtful, it's kids just thinking that they're funny. So the more education that can come out and say, these words do hurt other people, and the origins of these words and the terms would be helpful. So again, I appreciate the fact that the kids that are affected are being asked, not the kids that aren't being affected.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Carassella?
Thank you also, for me. And I just want to say, I'm glad we're having this conversation, and I know what prompted it is a recent incident, but I just hope we continue it. I think it's something that we really need to stay on top of and continue to discuss. And Dr. Robinson, I love the idea of the board having a statement, talking about the modeling of behavior. I know we have to do it as parents, but as board members, I think that's important too, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. I agree with that. Anyone else? Well, thank you very much for that. I do appreciate it. I agree with a lot of things that everyone said, so I'll try and get that out to everybody within the week, if that works. Okay, so that moves us to public comment. If you have anything, these are agenda items only, so things on the agenda that we're going to vote on tonight. There is another public comment at the end, where you can say whatever you want, but I will open this one up at 7:44. Please state your name and address.
Hi there. Colleen Manley, 70 Ridge Road. I'd like to comment on three agenda items, very quickly. First, P3, congratulations to Mr. Valentino on his appointment as the science supervisor. He's an amazing teacher, and we are extremely lucky to have him as a choice to be a leader of our science teachers. So I look forward to that. On P4, I'm very happy to see that there is an appointment of a middle school, high school, media center person. I think it's a real gap. I understand we have teachers in there doing that, but of course, media specialists do a lot more than just supervise, so I'm glad to see that we have that. And finally, on item G3, the attendance policy, I was just reading it and noticed some inconsistencies with the rules in the middle school, high school, as outlined in the student compendium. I think maybe a couple of these changes were recent. One of them was shared at the recent Junior Parent Night, that juniors and seniors now get five excused absences for college visits, and the policy says three, which I think was the old number. At least, that's what was shared with us. And then there's just the appeals process for an attendance thing, there's some inconsistencies in the date, number of days you have to find an appeal. And I'm not bringing this up to be nitpicky, I'm just, you know, there is a policy, I was familiar with it, I looked it over, and any parent who's going to go in to look at the policy and the compendium is going to be confused, so. Those are the two that I picked up, there might be some others. I just think it's probably worthwhile to have someone take a look at it again, to make sure everything's consistent.
Thank you very much. All right. Seen. No more. I guess I will close public comment at 7:47. I need a motion to discuss G1 through G11. Anyone? Dr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. McThebola. Does anyone have anything on our G items? All right, seen then.
Ms. Carassella?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. McThebola?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
I say yes, with note that we intend on following up on the G3 item as stated.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes.
You skipped me, Mike.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes, thank you.
Just making sure you're awake.
She will not be looked over, Mike. Okay, I need a motion to discuss B1 through B7. Ms. Scarpelli, seconded by Mr. Hayward. Anyone have any B things to discuss? Seen then.
Ms. Carassella?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. McThebola?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
I need a motion to discuss the P1, P1 through P17. Ms. Scarpelli, seconded by Ms. Carassella. Does anyone have anything on the P items? Ms. Carr?
I'm going to be abstaining on P14 specifically for Christopher Libel, just because he's a dear friend of mine, so.
No problem, thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Scarpelli?
I just wanted to show my support for P3, for Mr. Valentino. He had been a middle school science teacher for a few of my kids back in the day, and I'm so happy for him and excited to see him in his new role. I applaud him for going further, getting his supervisor cert, getting his physics cert for us, and now taking on the lead of being the supervisor of that department. I think he'll be great, he's such energy. I'm sad for the classrooms, but I'm sure we'll get a, you know, he'll mold someone under his tutelage, so congratulations.
Thank you. Couldn't agree more.
And I'd like to wish Julie Burnett a wonderful retirement from her long-term time here at Glen Rock.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Stevenson?
I just want to say, I'm happy to see Eric Hernandez as being hired as the athletic trainer. Fortunately, I do not know him well, means nobody in my family's been injured, but the kids really do like him and respect him, and we really do need a second trainer, not only just at games, but also for, like, the rehab and things the kids do. So he really is a, was a great addition this year, so I'm happy to see he's being hired.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Corey?
P14, we have people that volunteer in our community. One of those is Mr. Paul White, he's a longtime retired teacher. His, he was a quarterback at Georgetown, his body is broken, and he still shows up, and he's part of the fabric of this community. So seeing his name here as an approved volunteer is an important thing that is why Glen Rock is here. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Anyone else? All right. I also did want to mention about Ms. Burnett, she taught my kids, so I just have to say that I wish her tons of success in the next chapter of her life, and she will be missed at Central, but I wish her all the best. And that's all. All right, so seen then.
Ms. Carassella?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes, except as noted.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. McThebola?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes, except on P17, as it pertains to me.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes.
All right. I believe that brings us- All right. I believe that brings us down to our HIBB resolution. I need a motion to affirm the HIBB from March 13th. Ms. Mactabola, seconded by Ms. Scarpelli.
Ms. Caricella?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Mactabola?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson? Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes. And just to go backwards a bit to the G items, forgot to recognize, in G9, we had a family, the Graus family, donate to Bird School, some task chairs, seven testers. Wanted to just appreciate that and say thank you to that family. And then that brings you to the vandalism suspension and HIBB reports for your review. And now, our second of our two public comments, and you're welcome to say whatever you'd like here. I will open it up at 7:53. State your name and address.
Good evening. Excuse me. My name is Scott Davidoff, 859 South Maple Ave, here in Glen Rock. I have two children in the high school, school, one in ninth grade, one in 10th. Actually, I had a graduate who's at, at JMU. But I, I was just hoping to take a couple of minutes and, first of all, thank you all for the work that you're doing. This is, this is good. This is the first time I've ever actually attended one of these, and I've lived here almost 20 years, so shame on me. But what I was hoping to do is talk, talk to you briefly, or really just start a dialogue about, I know it's a hot potato topic, but notwithstanding what we've seen in the news today, or maybe you haven't seen the news, unfortunately, there was a, another school shooting in Tennessee. There was actually a stabbing as well in Long Island. So a young, excuse me, a middle school girl is, is fighting for her life. We want, excuse me, we want to keep our kids safe. We all do. And, excuse me, I don't, I don't know, I'm getting emotional. But I want, I want to see all these kids safe, not just my kids. Your kids, their kids, all of our kids. And I know talking about the security guards that are former police officers, you know, it's, it's a good start. I don't know if they're considered resource officers or just security officers, but talking who, who, I'm, I'm not really a proponent of, of guns in schools, quite frankly. But if, if you're hiring ex-police officers to act as security guards, or, or again, resource officers, it may be time to open up the dialogue about, or start the dialogue again about, at least, not, not teachers, but the resource, resource officers that are trained police, former police officers carrying guns. And, you know, for, I think for years, I, I was not in favor of that, but if we think in this enclave of Glen Rock, it can't happen here, I think we're sort of fooling ourselves. The gentleman earlier talked about antisemitism on the rise, and those are words. You know, words lead to actions, and we don't want to see those actions, you know, come here. It, it, it almost doesn't matter if you're, if you're for, you know, a proponent of, of the Second Amendment or not. I think it boils down to, and, and it was articulated on the news earlier, time. We got to think about time. If, if something, God forbid, were to happen here, the, the time for a police officer, or police officers to be able to make their way to the school and enter the school and protect our students, our administrators, our teachers, you know, is the difference between life and death in this day and age. And, you know, why, why, I'm sorry, is that my time?
Yes.
One, one, one more, one more quick thing. I mean, if, if we're hiring, again, if we're hiring these, these ex-police officers, why, why are we really doing that? Because the fact that they're police officers is great, but at the end of the day, if they're not, if they do not have the ability to protect us, if we need them, you know, I think we're just fooling ourselves. So, but thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bruce Henneker, 510 Rock Road. Good evening, members of the Glen Rock Board of Education, Superintendent Charleston, and fellow community members. My name is Bruce Henneker, and I am the parent of three wonderful children attending the Glen Rock Public Schools. I stand before you today to address the ongoing incidents of racist and bigoted graffiti in our schools, the district's response to these incidents, and to propose a collaborative approach toward a more inclusive and safe environment for our students. I would like to acknowledge the response I received from a board member regarding my initial letter. I appreciate the efforts made by the district thus far. I appreciate the discussion today as well. But I must clarify my position. I do not expect Superintendent Charleston or district leadership to completely eradicate hate from our community in a short time. However, given the disparity in the frequency of these incidents compared to surrounding districts, I believe we must question our current approach and seek opportunities for improvement. It's hard to ignore the local media reports on these incidents, most recently this morning, where I was greeted with an article titled "Swastika Again Found Carved on Glen Rock School Property Officials." It is the recurrence of these incidents and this extremely negative publicity that causes me so much concern, and how comparatively, this is an issue that is not affecting surrounding school districts to the degree that is affecting our community. I agree that fixing this problem is not solely the responsibility of Glen Rock Public Schools. However, as an institution, public education has a unique role in educating our students to become not just productive members of society, but also students who are conscientious and respectful of different cultures. As someone who's worked in public education for over two decades, I understand that changing a culture takes time, but I believe we must explore additional strategies to accelerate progress and ensure the well-being of our students. As call to action, I propose that district leadership explore partnerships with agencies and organizations that have expertise in dealing with challenging culture and climate issues specifically related to student expression of racist and bigoted ideas. I am pleased to learn, based on information shared today, as well as in the article that I previously referenced, that Glen Rock Public Schools will seek to partner with the Anti-Defamation League to understand how to proceed with possible solutions. Likewise, the district may wish to see how other organizations, such as the Southern Poverty Law Center and Facing History in Ourselves, may offer resources, training, and support for schools striving to create inclusive environments and address instances of hate and bias effectively. By partnering with these agencies, our district can benefit from their experience and expertise in implementing restorative practices and targeted interventions to prevent future incidences, promote healing, and foster a culture of inclusivity and respect. Additionally, I encourage the district to ensure greater transparency and communication with the community regarding the Equity Action Plan's implementation and progress, including regular updates and opportunity for feedback. I'd specifically like more publicity surrounding the progress being made to address the two specific community concerns identified in the plan, which are to quote "antisemitism incidents in school" and "student talk includes racial, ethnic, and/or misogynistic microaggressions, often in the form of jokes." Though the suggested actions and timeframe seem promising, the only communication related to those concerns are letters from the superintendent announcing yet another racist incident.
Excuse me, sir, your time has, is up. If you could just wrap it up, that'd be great.
Certainly. Those letters do literally assure me that the Equity Action Plan is working. Rather, I encourage the district to do what the plan proposes and discuss the progress being made via the district website, as indicated in the plan, or via district communication. Specifically, let us know how the partnership-
Your time is up, sir. Thank you very much. All right. Seen no more. Close public comment at 8 o'clock. All right, that brings us to old business. Does anybody have any old business? No old business. How about new business? Charleston?
I do have new business. Dr. McKay can, can join us. Our next meeting date is April 10th. That's the day we get back from spring break. It'll be a, a Cal meeting. I'd like to talk with the board, excuse me, a little bit about a preschool grant. I don't know, maybe six to, six to eight weeks ago, we, we got a Department of Education, uh, letter stating that there was $120 million grant to expand preschool. And with that grant, the district would get 40% back on anything that we spent money on. So we've had several meetings. I've met with Dr. McKay and Ms. Lubrano. We've met with Community School, obviously with Mike. We've talked to the architects. And we believe that there is an opportunity for us to, to apply for this grant and to get funding for it. In particular, we'd like to expand preschool to better serve our students. So currently, I'll let Jen talk about what we currently have.
Hi, everyone. So currently, we run our Stars program, which we recently named at the tail end of last school year. And that program encompasses two preschool programs, both preschool disabled, one full day and one half day. The half day, we have two sections of it. One runs in the morning and one runs in the afternoon. In those programs, we can house up to nine students. All students are special needs. They all fall under the category of preschool disabled. But nonetheless, we do run two different programs, and they are currently housed, one at Central and one at Coleman.
So those are the two existing programs that we have. We'd like to, as we go through this discussion, maintain the full-day preschool disabled program, which is currently housed at Coleman, and then have two, what we would call preschool integrated full-day programs, which would give us a third section of preschool. And Dr. McKay, can you talk about preschool integrated?
Sure. So right now, one of the downsides to our program that we currently run is that there are very minimal opportunities for mainstreaming. And so the teachers do an excellent job with maximizing those opportunities, as few and far between as they may be. So for example, they may participate with a kindergarten class, or they might participate in a special, or just a separate activity where the two, where one teacher works with another general education teacher, and they do something like Book Buddies or things like that. But those opportunities are not as consistent. And so by expanding our program with this grant, it would open up the doors to provide services to more students and general education students, so that our programs become much more inclusive than they currently are. So ultimately, that would be the greatest benefit. I think just expanding the program itself would be beneficial, but of course, what it boils down to is those opportunities would certainly grow then with that expansion of the general ed.
So in speaking with our architect, we've identified the space here, actually at the high school, middle school, which is affectionately known as the Little Theater. Little Theater is a big room in the basement that currently houses class each day. And reaching out to the director of guidance, we're able to, if we move forward, to schedule that out. We could fit that, that class in the building. And that opens up this big space where we believe that we can get three full-size preschool classrooms with restrooms in that area. In addition, Dr. McKay and I would like to, would investigate creating a child development class where our high school students can come down and work with our, our preschool teachers and, and students, so we can really try to grow the teaching profession as well, which is something that we all, we all know we need. So that's, that's really it in a nutshell. Really, the, the next steps, Mike, would be for the architect to, if the board wants to move forward, for your architect to come out and start looking at the space. He has looked at it in the past. He does believe that we would qualify for this grant. It does fall within the guidelines. And I think what I, what I haven't shared, and is not the reason for this, but if you do take two classes out of the elementary schools, we do create two more sections. So construction maybe could be held off at, at the elementary schools, and then we could have really 10 sections of each grade level across the district, district-wide. So it's a, it's sort of a win-win in that sense. Jen and I are happy to take any, any, any questions about this. We think it's hard to pass it. You don't need a referendum or anything along those lines. It's, it's just apply for the grant, and if you get it, similar to a rod grant.
No, I was going to really ask specifically, like, money-wise, what is, how much of the grant would pay for the renovating of this space?
40%.
So, okay, so we'd have to come up with 60. So we, we don't even have a ballpark of what it would be like until we hire the architect to draw up something.
Last time they looked at it, it was a little over a million dollars. Might be a little bit more now.
Any other questions?
Mine's similar. Ms. Mactabola?
How many students, you're saying this is three, three new kinds of classroom plus the one at Coleman?
So it would be two additional. So we would, we would keep one preschool disabled. That's a very specific group of students, and I think it's important that we maintain that program. But the expansion of the integrated, so the preschool code is very interesting in that they don't nail down a specific number as far as the maximum. But if you go by state-run preschools in school districts, such as Newark-Patterson, the magic number is 16 students in totality. And then no more than half would be able to be special education. I would like to keep that number lower, most certainly, especially when we open. But that is, those are the numbers. So we can certainly work up to those numbers, but also work within much lower than those numbers.
We would anticipate a high demand for this. So it would be a lottery. But if, if the numbers happen to be less, we think that this would be a really great opportunity to offer it up for staff, right, and for, so for them to allow them to have their kids here that year as a way of, you know, easing their burden, right, in terms of finding daycare and things along those lines, or preschool, excuse me.
I just have one question for, just to clarify. So the new classes would be a mix of students with special needs and some without?
So we would maintain one preschool disabled class, and then the two others would be a mixture.
So how does this impact the community school and the preschool programs being run there? Is this really bringing that back in-house? Is that what we're looking at?
No, the community school, I don't want to speak for Mike, but I'll, I'll share this, that we did, they see no impact on us creating this program. Would affect them in any way, shape, or form. And in terms of their location, they're very happy with their location and want to, want to remain there. They seem like they have established a base, and they're, they're good there. Mike's going to ask for a hundred, a hundred-year lease, so.
And just one more question. For the kids that are coming in, it will be tuition-based or, or not?
It would be through a lottery.
A lottery. Would there be a cost to the family?
Free.
It'd be free.
So.
And, and the kids with special needs, are they Glen Rock kids, or are we taking, we take out a district for that, correct?
So in our autism programs, we do. For, so for preschool disabled, we would entertain it. But for the integrated, so what I've learned over starting the autism programs is that it's most important to work within the confines of your community first. And then as you get up and running, we, we see, you know, what works and what's a, you know, what may be a good fit or not. So we would start, of course, in-house.
Anyone else? All right. Next.
I'd like to get a, a show of hands in terms of if this is something that we can move forward with, because there is, there will be a cost with the architect, getting the architect involved. So could we do a straw poll?
Straw poll for, in favor of. Appears as though you may move forward.
Dr. McKay, you're like batting 1,000%. Like, is-
I think she is.
Bring you here more, more, more often. So we'll keep the board informed along the way. After the architect looks at it and the prices have skyrocketed, we'll revisit. But it is very hard to pass up 40% on, on, on a project like this. very hard to pass up 40% on, on, on a project like this. Okay. The other piece is the, thank you, Dr. McKay, you are, you're welcome to stay. Okay. She did not, not even say goodbye, left. Yeah, no, she's, she's already back at home. So the, the last piece is the remaining emergency closing days. I've provided the board with, with an update on, on Friday. Mr. Rinderconnect, Mr. Much, and I have had multiple conversations about the implosion at Nabisco and how it may or may not affect Hamilton, or even the district for, for that matter. We've also had conversations with our environmental consultant, and we have the same information that everybody else has, right, that's on the FAQ. We have no other additional information than that. It just doesn't exist in terms of our access to that. So it, it appears, as of now, that the implosion will take place on Saturday, April 15th at, at 8:00 a.m. My plan is assuming that the implosion does happen on, on the April 15th, would be to close the district using one of our emergency closing days on Monday to give us, out of an abundance of caution, extra time to get ready to open school on, on Tuesday. There are a couple of things that, that will be in place. Our environmental consultant, after speaking with him today, will be on-site, or one of his workers on-site the day of the implosion, to monitor the dust, to monitor the dust cloud. They will have, I think, a video as well, he had shared, a video as well. We, as a district, will be shutting down Hamilton Friday night at 11:00 p.m. So all sports on Friday can continue at Hamilton. At 11:00 p.m., shut down. Our security and maintenance will be there early Saturday morning to block everything off. All the vents and dampeners will be closed prior to the implosion, obviously. And then after the implosion, either on Sunday or Monday, we will then do a deep cleaning and also change out all of the filters throughout the entire building. There are, we're going to do three baseline air quality tests for airborne particulates, respirable airborne particulates, and asbestos. Though we were going, we're going to do a pre, so we have a baseline, and then a post. And those will be taken inside the building, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Rinderconnect. They'll be taken inside the building on Saturday after the implosion. Those will be immediately sent out to a lab, and we will get those results back by Monday afternoon, early evening, and we're going to assume that those tests will come back fine, and we'll be able to open school on, on Tuesday. We're doing all of this, again, out of an abundance of caution. Comfortable opening school on, on Monday. I feel like the, the, the town has done a good job in keeping us informed. As you drive by it, the building is basically gutted now, but there will be debris. There's going to be dust, there's going to be things along those lines. We want to err on the side of caution and make sure that our students and staff are, obviously, are safe. So in being that we have those two days left, I think that's a, a good use of one of those emergency closing days. I did speak to the county superintendent about this, and he concurred, and he thought that that was a, a wise decision. However, we will not close school until the building comes down, right? So if they decide on Saturday the 15th, well, we're, we're not closed, we're not, whatever, we're waiting another week, then we're going to have school. So it's going to have to be treated like a snow day, right? And we'll call it as soon as it comes down, then we know that we can call it and close school for that, for that Monday. And I would put this in writing and send it out to the, to the community this week, so they can potentially plan if this, if this were to happen. Am I missing anything, Mr. Rinderconnect? So that, that's my plan. I'm happy to take any board questions, I'll answer as best I can.
I just have a small, small question. With the, with the weather that we've been having, there's been a lot of wind, and can we put fans up and blow the, blow the stuff in the other direction? No, I'm, I'm just concerned about the, the wind blowing in, in our direction. Not that the immediate schools wouldn't get whatever it is that's there, but then it'll carry more into town. Can we warn people to look for the wind? I mean, I think that, I think, to me, that's somewhat of an issue.
What I'm going to say to that is, you know, I don't think it's appropriate for us to warn the community. That's the borough's job. Dr. Charleston spoke about how we're going to protect the student staff and the school community at large. Beyond that, that would be the borough's job to do any, any of that. I thought you were going to ask if there were any more oatmeal cookies before they imploded the building.
I'm still looking for peanut butter. I live close to Nabisco. Certain people on my block did receive letters registered, that we had assigned for, that explained what was going to happen and what precautions that we should take. So I would imagine anyone who's in that, I don't know how far or how many feet they used, but the people there were, were told.
Any other questions?
I did get this one, one question. So let's just say everything happens as, as planned. The district will be, would, would close on Monday, April 17th, right? But in, in the afternoon, I'm still going to allow, like, high school sports at, at the high school, right? I'm still going to allow other place, things to be used. We're just going to keep Hamilton shut down for that, just so there's no, and I'll share that in, in a letter that I'll, that I'll put together.
Sorry, one question. I know we talked about the inside of Hamilton. Is there anything concerns about the playground equipment or anything there to clean or do? I don't know enough about it to really ask further.
Well, well, again, monitor. As Dr. Charleston said, it's, a lot of this is dependent on which way that plume travels, but you can rest assured, we're not only going to be doing a deep cleaning internally, we'll be also looking at the outside as well.
Perfect. Thanks.
Dr. Charleston, just so I can report back to the, to the rec advisory board, one, Tuesday after school, we're, okay, thanks.
We did, I did have Ms. Peridi share, not as much detail, but this plan today at her faculty meeting with her staff, and they seemed okay with, with the plan, like, going forward. They feel like they're informed and, and the, we have their best interests in, in mind. So I got to get the letter out to the parents in Hamilton and community as, as well. We'll just see what happens on, on the 15th. Hopefully, it comes down, and then we can shut, and everything proceeds according to plan.
So Dr. Charleston, are we for sure closed down on the 17th?
So, Ms. Rindell, we are not for sure closed on the 17th unless the building comes down on the 15th. Building must come down, so that means that it hits the ground, and then there's a plume, and then someone's going to call me, and then I'm going to institute the school messenger and shut down schools for, for, for Monday.
That sounds fair. All right, anything else?
There's going to be a lot of kids rooting for that building to come down.
What about the other day? There's two.
We're going to hold off on the other day right now, just want to get through the implosion of Nabisco, and then the other day, nice try, but the other day will, will be down, down the road.
Just asking from the community.
Yes.
We're waiting for another snowstorm.
Yes, I'm waiting for an April snowstorm.
It still could happen. It has happened. Okay. So I think that's it, but.
We're going to close it?
Yes. So, oh, one more.
I'm sorry. I, I've been meaning to bring it up, but I wanted to see how my first few meetings went. Two things I'd like to just ask, I guess, the board, the president and the superintendent to consider. One is, can we move everybody closer on the tables, because we used to sit two, and I, you know that I'm constantly going, I can't hear you, and I feel bad saying that, and, you know, we, we do actually like each other. Number two is, I hate saying in the past and years ago, but in the past and years ago, the board used to receive their agendas on Thursday. And I understand the reason was changed, because it was hard for central office to prepare, and we used to have a lot of last-minute things. But over the last couple of years, I'm seeing we don't have the pinks anymore. Anybody who knows knows. It was like last-minute agenda items and stuff like that. It seems that you've gotten a very good hold on it. But I work, as do, I believe, everybody, and I'm not reading the agenda until Saturday night, sometimes Sunday morning, and the fact that residents are reading, because they have the opportunity to read it on Friday when it's posted, they, they'll know before the rest of us, who may not get a chance to read it. So I'm just respectfully requesting that if you can consider getting it out Thursday, five o'clock would be, you know, those added hours for us are, are, is better. So.
We'll.
Take it under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Just those two things. Thank you.
I also would agree with the agenda. Weekends get busy. You know, we're asking teachers not to respond to emails over the weekends, rightfully so, and I agree with that 100%. I think for some of us, that would, that would also lighten a little bit, because we do have families and we have other obligations, and to spend a weekend, you know, so obviously I do it, but if we're, we're considering, concerning teachers not responding back on weekends, I think that's in courtesy. Might be nice if it was extended to us and gave us extra time to really look through. So we're doing our, our good job here.
Thank you. All right, so we have to go back into closed. So I need a motion to adjourn back into closed, right? Is that good enough? We're not going to take any action. Recess to closed, we're not going to come back, because we will not be taking any action. Dr. Robinson, seconded by Mr. Hayward. All in. All right, we'll take a little recess, go to the bathroom, and then-